Call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Belsley.
Here.
Herr.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Kaufman.
Here.
Newhouse.
Here.
Yarco.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do not have any public hearings tonight. We do have a couple of presentations, and the first one being Clifton Larson Allen Audit Report for us, so Jeff, if you would come forward.
Thank you. My name's Jeff Bonnick. I'm a partner with Clifton Larson Allen. I have Adam Polley here with me as well. We performed an audit of your fiscal year 2012 financial statements, and each of you should have a copy of those. It's a large bound copy. Our opinion on your financial statements for fiscal year 2012 is an unqualified or a clean opinion. Included in the financial statements is management's discussion and analysis, the government-wide and fund financial statements, then there's footnotes that provide additional information about the financial statements. There is supplementary information, which gives you information on the IRMRF, police pension, environment's pension. There's some budget to actual comparison schedules, and then there's some more detailed information on the individual funds. Rather than go through this document, which would probably take a little while, we prepared a graphical analysis for you that I'd like to talk about. It really focuses on the general fund and then the utility funds. So the first set of graphs that you should have, which is a separate handout, looks like You can see the first two graphs are the general fund cash and investments. What you can see is the cash has been increasing over the last four or five years, while the investments have declined. Primary reason for that is, as most of you know, the interest rates available for investments is almost nothing, so it's not really much benefit to tie up your money over long periods of time. The next page, we have the receivables from the state of Illinois. This is primarily income taxes and sales taxes. You can see the balances are relatively steady over the last five years. On average, it's about three months it's outstanding at any one given point in time. So the balance of roughly 1.7 million at the end of your fiscal year is roughly three months of receivables from the state. Property taxes, this is property tax revenue, was 1.2 million this past fiscal year. You can see there was a little bit of an increase in 2010, and the primary reason for that increase is just how the property taxes for police pension were accounted for. They used to go straight into the police pension fund. Back in 2010, it was changed so that they go in the general fund, and they're paid over to the police pension fund. So really, no substantial change there, just a difference in accounting. The next page, sales taxes and income taxes. You can see the sales taxes is at the highest level it's been in the last five years, whereas the income taxes are, have been relatively flat over the last couple of years. Income taxes were at their highest level back in fiscal year 2008. So that would have been the period ended April 30th, 2008, as most of you will recall. Shortly thereafter, the economy kind of went in the tank, so fortunately, the income taxes have not come back to the level they were at back in fiscal year 2008. The next page, telecommunications taxes and utility franchise fees. Telecommunication was 600,000 this past fiscal year, and then utility franchise fees, just under $1 million this past year. Next page is federal grant revenue, and then charges for services and sales. You can see the federal grant revenue back in 2010, big spike in that. That was the fire truck grant that you received. And then charges for services and sales, really relatively flat. This graph's a little bit deceiving based on the numbers that are on the side. There really hasn't been a substantial change in that, but that's primarily the paramedic fees and then gas sales. Then the next page, total revenues. You can see total revenues this past year in the general fund were 10.2 million dollars. Then the next graph, capital expenditures, was 2.5 million this past year. Again, a spike in 2010. That was the fire truck, and then also expenditures on the fire station. The next page, death service expenditures. You can see those went up primarily a result of the loan for the fire station. And then operating expenditures, overall, have been relatively steady. Back in 2008 was 6.9 million. This past year, 7.5 million, so really not much of an increase over a five-year time And then we have total expenditures. Again, not a substantial change over the past five years. And then we have general fund net transfers. The transfers fluctuate based on the number of street, gas, and sewer projects that are taking place in any one given year.
Can we back up to the general fund total expenditures?
Yes, sir.
It looks to me like the 2012 total expenditures was basically the same as 2009. Am I reading the chart correctly?
You are.
And so today, we are basically living off the same number of dollars as we had in 2009 expenditures.
That's true. Yep, that's true, and there was a spike in 2010, but again, it's capital-related fire station and a new fire truck, so that's true.
Okay, thank you.
So we get to general fund, other financing sources and uses. 2010, 2011, you've received the proceeds of the loan on the fire station. That actually shows up in this particular graph. And then we have the general fund change in fund balance. You can see that fluctuates from year to year, but overall, the average is an increase in your fund balance of roughly $500,000 per year, again reflecting controlling expenditures and hopefully revenues increasing over time. And then the last graph for the general fund is the general fund unassigned or unreserved fund balance. The end of fiscal year 2012 was $7.2 million, which is about 70% of the annual expenditures. The reason that I note the percent of annual expenditures is it is proven to have a certain percentage of annual expenditures because of the delay in receiving revenue, whether it be from property taxes, sales taxes, income taxes. And we typically will see percentages somewhere between 50 and 150%, depending on the local government. So, you know, this is a good, healthy number, but by no means what I would consider excessive Any questions on the general fund information? Okay. Do you have a couple minutes for me to go through the utility?
Certainly do.
Okay.
I want the community to hear what you have to say.
The cash and investments for the utility funds, which is garbage, water and sewer, sanitary sewer, again, it's very similar to the general fund. You can see the cash balances have increased, while the investment balances have decreased. Back in 2008, you had 4.4 million in cash versus 9.3 million this past fiscal year. Investments, 6.2 million versus 180,000. Overall, not a big change in total, just a change in the mix of the two. Capital assets is the next graph. This is net of accumulated depreciation. You can see that capital assets have continued to increase over the last five years, which reflects the village's continued investment in the various utilities and the infrastructure.
And the infrastructure.
Yep. Again, this is just the utilities, but continued investment in those. During that same time that that investment has been made, the next graph will show that the equity has continued to at least hold the line, if not increase a little bit. It's increased just over 10, just under 10% over the last five years. Then to the operating revenues. And this is net of the cost of natural gas that you purchase. Back in 2008, it was 7.9 million dollars, roughly 9.7 this past fiscal year, pretty much a steady increase over the last five years. And then the operating expenses, those have also increased. They were roughly 5 million back in 2008, 6.8 million dollars this past fiscal year. We have the operating income. Back in 2008, it was 2.9 million dollars. 2012, 2.9 million dollars. Then we have the transfers, and I don't know if you recall back in the general fund, there was a big transfer in in 2009. You see the other side of it here, when there's investments, again, in street, sewer, water projects. Oftentimes, the utility funds will cover part of the cost of the street, part of the The change in net assets, that has been a positive number in four of the five years. The one year it was negative is when there were substantial transfers to the general fund. This past year was 2.8 million dollars and has averaged 1.5 million dollars the last five years. The last graph just reflects the earlier comment I made about the continued investment in the infrastructure. 2008, 2 million dollars. 2012, 2.6 million. It's actually averaged 2.7 million dollars a year investing in the utility and infrastructure. Depreciation is ranging about 1.3 to 1.4 million a year for those funds. So you're outpacing the depreciation of those assets.
All in all, I'm sure you do other communities. How do we compare to other communities as far as the assets improving, as far as the fund balances? The key factors?
Well, I think key factors, you have adequate resources to meet your obligations as they become due, but you're continuing to invest in the infrastructure, whether it's street, sewer, water treatment plants, and things like that. You know, everything looks positive. Just two other quick items I wanted to mention. There are two letters that we issued in connection with the audit, and really, nothing in these letters to be concerned about. The first letter, if there were any concerns, we'd mention them to you. There really aren't any. The one big item, the one item that we do mention in there is we do make adjustments to take your books and records from the cash basis of accounting to the accrual basis of accounting. So we record receivables, payables, things like that. We take your capital expenditures, capitalize them, and then depreciate the assets. So that's something that we've been working with Wendy on. We will have future discussions about any opportunities for the village to record some of those adjustments going forward. And then the other thing, there were a couple of internal control items that we noted during our audit. One of them has already been corrected. It was actually corrected before the end of the fiscal year, and there's another one that we met with Wendy on, and they're in the process of developing an action item to address it. So with that, entertain any questions you might have.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I've had some audits where you were, not you, but auditors are disruptive to the process, and you stayed pretty well hidden, so we appreciate that. But I have to say that I've worked with you over the years and with your firm many years, and you do a very fine job.
Thank you. We enjoy working with the village.
Thank you. Let's move on to the second one, and that is downtown Morton Plaza update. Bruce?
Good evening. I'm Bruce Brown, the project manager with Farnsworth Group that's been working on the downtown plaza. I think we've all chatted on several occasions. We wanted to just take a few moments and update you where we are in the process, and I've given you a handout that you can add to your files and put away as you need to down the road. Just very quickly, the process that we've come through, you had charged us at the very beginning of this that this needed to be a public and open process. We started back in June, and we started with surveys and questionnaires, environmental reports along the way, and we proceeded down that road, open to the public every step of the way as we go. We presented our first sketches to you back in June, and we got some feedback on those, in which turn, we didn't turn around and put the first schematic concept together in July, which was presented to the public, went out for public opinion, was presented to you on August the 6th, and has also been reviewed with the Veterans Associations and several other groups within the community as well. The items that have risen to the top, as far as our design elements for this, as you can see on page one toward the bottom, is the interactive water feature, playgrounds, the entertainment area, the Veterans Memorial, the shaded seating, and the public restrooms. On our scale of 1 to 5, 5 being the best, those were the items that had 4 or better, and those are the ones that we have focused on along the way. The open process back in July and August, we had 475 people respond to that overall, and from those, we got 33% of them kind of expressed general support. As far, we got 33% comments from the 475. Most of them were just chiming in yes or no. But we overall saw general support of that. We saw about 4% that disliked it, and we had a large number at 108 or 23% that actually made specific suggestions. For example, we had one crew, and I think they talked to you, Steve as well, that came to us about, how about chessboards, water fountains, all kinds of little things that will actually come later in the process, but we have a sort of a growing list of little things that could make this plaza better overall along the way. We took the comments that we had from that public presentation, and we refined the master plan or the schematic design one more time in August. We put together the three-dimensional sketch-up animation model, and we took that to the Pumpkin Festival. We were there for the entire Pumpkin Festival and for the entire merchant tent the entire time. We averaged, we had about two, usually two to three staffers from Farnsworth Group there to answer questions. We averaged about eight to 10 people. We didn't really keep a running number, but we sat down as a group as we were done. About eight to 10 people per hour that would stop and engage us and discuss the project in detail. A lot of other people would watch, didn't want to offer comment. We actually had 24 people fill out comment cards at that, but a lot of people just wanted to talk. And overall, the two big questions that we kept coming back to, and I think the animation showed them, was are we trying to put too much into too small of a space? Most people did not understand where the boundaries of the project are. They assumed Washington Street was staying, and once we showed them how this thing reaches out, a lot of people's minds were put at ease. The second is a potential conflict between the entertainment area and the pavilion being built down at Idlewood Park. And so to address both of those, I think we addressed the space issues through the three-dimensional model. I've not heard, I've heard very few people respond negatively once they understand where the limits of the project are. As far as the pavilion and its relationship to that, we are working with the Director of Tourism, and we're actually going to take her calendar and overlay that with how that plaza could be used and start to show, you know, functionally, what events could actually happen within this space so that we can make an informed decision when we get ready to move on. If the entertainment area needs to wait because we can't show that it's functional enough to work with what we need to do, then we'll leave that as open space. But if we can prove it, and I think Susan's already got a pretty good idea how she can use it for a lot of things down there, we will make that work. We want to emphasize, a lot of people did not understand this, and Steve and I have been around this horn a couple of times. We're building a plaza, not a park. And if you go back to your downtown master plan, you're going in a direction of development, a new urbanism, and a plaza is a more appropriate use for this space as opposed to sort of an older open space type of park. And so every chance we have had, we've tried to explain that to people. Once they understand that, I think it makes, again, makes it a lot more sense. So we've gone through a large educational process here. We've had over 500 comments come back to us. We had it on display for four days at the Pumpkin Festival. We will continue to engage whatever groups want to see this and make it available to them. We also took the 3D animation. Farnsworth Group has a YouTube account. We put it up there two weeks ago. It's there for anybody that wants to go see it. As of this morning, it had 103 hits in two weeks, and that's without really telling anybody that's there. So we will continue to run that until the day we build the thing down the road at this point. Our remaining work to be done. We are currently working through design development level drawings so we can ensure that we're doing the right pricing for the project. We have a lot of custom pieces, and so rather than guessing, we've actually been working with some vendors to look at what we've designed and make sure we're in the ballpark with the pricing structure that we're putting together with those so that we understand we have a realistic price when we give you that budget along the way. I have a list of variances, minor variances, but setbacks, things in the right of ways that the city and village will need to deal with at the appropriate time. Probably one of the first steps you want to look at is zoning. I think it's currently Zone B3. We might want to discuss with Roger whether that ought to be a special use or how you want to do that for the public's best interest along the way. And then we'll continue to review with the organizations as needed, and then not too far down the road, Jennifer, will need to start putting together a campaign to raise money, and so we'll be working hand in hand with her to provide the graphics and the narratives and whatever else is needed to put that together and move forward. So in a nutshell, because we've all been down this road a few times, that's sort of where we're at. We expect to have the bulk of our work done in the next two to three weeks or by the end of this month, so we have the budget in order for Craig and I to review with Jennifer as well. We'll bring that budget back to you once we have it for your review and comments as well. I don't want to belabor the point, and we all have things to do. Are there questions, comments, or anything that we can answer for you tonight? And I brought the graphic just in case we needed to refer to something.
Will the budget be laid out by areas, so if it has to be phased?
Absolutely. If you look on page two, you know, our current design, we have identified basically six elements, and I'm breaking the design down by those, each of those elements. So we know the playground's separate from the plaza itself up at the top and the water feature, so we can make an informed decision along the way. It takes a little bit more time to break it down like that, but it's a much more useful estimate when we're done.
Any more questions? Good work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce.
Our pleasure.
All right. Do we have any public comments tonight? Request for removal of items from the consent agenda by the public. Consent agenda denied is approval of minutes for the regular meeting of October 1st, approval of the bills, and under other business permission, request bids for uniform rental. Is there any items that the audience would like to move down to Action Item 8, consideration of items removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Does the board like to move any items down? If not, may I have a motion?
Move approval, Your Honor?
Second.
Any discussion?
Belsley.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Yarco.
Yes.
Motion passed. I have nothing tonight. Mr. Clerk, do you have anything?
Nothing tonight.
Madam Treasurer.
Today, I'm asking for approval to transfer 9,000 from the general fund, 3,000 from the water and wastewater depreciation fund, and 10,000, on your sheets it says 100,000, but it should be 10,000 from the stormwater depreciation fund to the capital projects fund.
So moved, Your Honor?
Second.
So Craig's not spending as much money anymore?
You've slowed him down.
Thank you. Roll call.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Yarco.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Counselor. Nothing tonight. Chief.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Mr. Lotterman.
In your packets is the Public Works Recap for the month of September. That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
I'm sure you'd like to remind people now that the furnaces are coming on, you and the chief, that check the batteries on your carbon monoxide in your fire, especially with the time change coming up. It's a good time to remind them.
That is, that is an excellent time to remember to check your batteries during the time change, and now we do include the carbon monoxide as well as the smoke detectors as items to check.
Thank you. Mr. Spangler.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
And trustees tonight? Mr. Belsley?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Mr. Herr?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Mrs. Herman?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Mr. Kaufman?
Nothing tonight.
Aren't you going to remind us when the leaf and yard waste?
Well, I guess I could, couldn't I?
Yeah, I think we ought to.
I have to pull out my wallet.
Does that mean we're all going to get money seeing the maws? Look at all those $100 bills.
The annual yard waste is October 22nd to November 11th. Then we'll be shut down for three days, and then it'll start up again November 14th to December 12, December 2nd. So October 22nd to November 11th, then November 14th to December 2nd.
Thank you. Mr. Newhouse?
One agenda item this evening, Your Honor, and two informational items. In your packet, you have a letter from Minto Construction, which rather neatly summarizes the ordinance relative to the request I hear, and puts it all in one place so we can consider it. The request is for an expansion at Grim Chevrolet. You can see the diagram in the packet, and it basically asks for a waiver from the village board, which we have the authority to do and for which there is precedent. Now, I always have a little bit of a concern when we make exceptions, and that is where you, in the end, where do you begin drawing the line if you make a lot of exceptions? But we have not made a lot of exceptions, and this is a very good example of a case where there is modification to a building, but not so substantial a modification that would really challenge the premise on which it was built, which was the old standard for masonry. So the 40-foot extension, I think it is, does not materially change the existing building, and under the circumstances, it seems very appropriate for the board to waive the requirement for additional masonry and allow the new portion to be consistent with the existing building, and I therefore approve.
Second. Is there any discussion?
There's still masonry on this building. It's the same as the original, so it's just a continuation of the building.
Exactly.
It's about 40 inches, so it's not like we took off the masonry.
If the building were substantially destroyed in some way or other major modifications, then we might take a different view of it. But under the circumstances, for short extension, it would be inappropriate.
And they're extending two truck bays with over the door, so it's very appropriate.
Okay. Roll call.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Yarco.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Now, with respect to the two informational items, just want to remind everyone in Now, with respect to the two informational items, just want to remind everyone and particularly viewers, Morton residents, this coming plan commission meeting, third Monday of the month, will continue the case in which the minimum lot size for residential construction is being examined and a proposal to modify that ordinance is being looked at. And I would just recommend that anybody who has an interest, and this could be important for Morton's long-term potential, if you have an interest, you may want to attend that meeting or contact whichever trustee you prefer to discuss it with. I would like to invite the trustees to attend. Mrs. Herman attended the last one. I failed to mention that at the last meeting, but she did. Comment my request. And I don't know if you have any comment about what you saw, but I'm confident with what the plan commission is doing, but it does, it's extremely important to just get good, close examination.
I have a lot of faith in the plan commission. They clearly ask wonderful questions and take this very seriously. And there were some different options, I think, that may be explored, some different ways of looking at this. But certainly, I would encourage anyone who has an opinion about this or wants to provide information to please come to that meeting. It's very important.
Thank you. And the last item is with respect to the new waste contract. If you visit Village Hall or you visit the library, you will see on display the new garbage and recycling containers, the 65 and 35 gallon respectively sized containers. And you might just want to take a look at that. Seniors have the option of taking the 35 gallon container at a lower cost per month and that might turn out to be very attractive. So get a look at it if you have a chance.
I appreciate you bringing that senior section in right after I turned 65. That was very good of you to do that.
We recognize that there is a significant senior interest.
Are you done?
I am done.
All right. Mrs. Yarco?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
All right. We have a closed session for two reasons tonight. First one, discussing the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body pursuant to Section 2C 5 of the Open Meetings Act. The second one, purpose discussing the sale of property owned by the public body pursuant to Section 2C 6 of the Open Meetings Act. May I have a motion going to open, not a closed session?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Newhouse?
Yes.
Yarco?
Yes.
Belsley?
Yes.
Herr?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
And there will not be any action after the closed session.